Okay, we'll call the meeting to order of the Select Board on Thursday, September 7th, at 7:00 PM for the agenda approval, approved at the minutes of 8:10 and 8:24. Warrants, mail, administrative assistant report, road foreman's monthly board meeting, where he'll give his road report, road reclassification, diesel fuel, and sand bed status. Under new business, with selectmen appointments, fill vacancies, one for the BRCRC and one for Development Review Board. Town treasurer, we're gonna review the fund balance and general fund budget adjustment due to accruals. And off-road motorcycle race, someone's here to talk to us about that. And under all business, contractual tenancy, wood laying access, and personnel.
I'm moved to approve the agenda.
Second.
Anything to be added? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Approved at the minutes of 8:10.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the 8:10 minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approved at the minutes on 8:24.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the 8:24 minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That was a special move.
Right.
Warrants. Now, we've got a few of these, so bear with me, guys.
That might help you, sugar.
Payroll report, ending 8/18/2017, in the amount of $9,817.05. It's number one. Payroll report, ending 8/25/2017, in the amount of $8,092.91. Payroll report, ending 9/117, in the amount of $6,744.41. Payroll report, ending 9/8/2017, in the amount of $7,772.58. Cost payable, ending 8/18/17, in the amount of $48,814.56, of which $28,925 was to the People United Bank. Truck payment, if I'm correct? Right? What's that one? That's the large one on here. Okay. I remember reading these things way back when. Okay, under accounts payable, 8/25/17, in the $23,695.09. On this one, you have insurance, over $5,000, Green Mountain Power, over $5,000. And what's this one? Gorman Group for $2,000 something, and Beamers and IRS for over $2,000 each. Those are the big ones. Accounts payable, ending 8/26/17, in the amount of $3,536.64. Accounts payable, invoice, $16,066.55, ending 9/117. Puzic Water Quality, over $4,000. Bennington Regional, $2,855. I think that's for the work they're doing, of course, on the planning. And then the IRS, another large one, over $2,000. Okay. Accounts payable, 9, ending 9/8/17, $9,763.76. And this one. Let's see what it is. Yeah, nothing large on that one. Costs payable, ending 9/8/17, in the amount of $22,854.17. This is for the excavator, the other piece of equipment.
I'll try to lose you.
Please purchase. And again, it'll be ours, but right now, so please purchase. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? I'll be abstaining from number one and number four, because I have checks in those. All those in favor say aye.
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 Nail. Look, that's... Be in the way. Nail. We wish to announce that our Town of Pono website was launched on September 5th. You can access the site at www.townofpono.org or www.townofpono.com, or just Google the Town of Pono Vermont, and you'll see it and click on the website. The Board greatly thanks all of the Pono office staff for all the hard work they have put in to make this new website possible, and for your continued efforts in keeping everything as current as possible. We would also, to extend a very special thank you to our webmaster, Jen Holly, from Websites and More, on a job well done. And she will be continuing working with the town as we progress here. So, what everybody has been waiting for and hoping for, it's up, and I hope you go look at it, and you'll see that there's a place where you can, if you think something should be added, let us know, things of that nature. Okay. Okay, we have a contract here to do with our audit. Which I don't know if everybody's had a chance to read this or not, but one of the concerns that was shown to us is that, once again, there's not a part in here that mentioned with the financial presentation to the Board of Selectmen. Remember, last time we had to do that, we had a, it was a matter of exchange of memos back and forth for a while. There's two things I would like to do with this audit, if the Board agrees. One is to address that, and see if it can't be added to the contract, but also, I think we need to address to them, unless you feel a different audit body should do it, we need to audit the clerk records, which haven't been audited in a while, so we could add that also, and see what they would charge for that, in a letter.
When do we have to have it backed by us, or the date or...
End of June, the Town of Pono fiscal year, ended June 30th. I don't know if it has a date for us to get that...
Did we get billed for his presentation, when he came? Do you remember? Does anybody? I don't remember.
That could've been part of the final billing.
Okay.
Sometimes it's not all broken out, it's just says final.
Okay.
I thought we were gonna watch for that, 'cause that was like $500.
That's what he suggested, and we didn't know, but we'll see. We'll have to go back and look to see what's on.
Owen, are you aware of that? Did we get those for the...
Presentation.
...finals for the presentation? But it could've been part of the final.
So maybe we could recommend that we should clarify that in our contract, that that is something that we would require.
We basically want to clarify in this contract, that we want them to do that final presentation to the Board. And the other thing is, we'd like to get a quote from them on what it would mean to do the clerk audit.
Yearly.
Well, this is this audit.
And then to...
So... Okay.
You know, I just like to see what the, it's separate, it'd be separate from the contract, but we'd like to see what that would be, for the cost. Then we can either approve it or not approve it. But this here, the only thing we need changed on this, is the fact that his presentation...
Right.
And then a separate thing for what it would mean to audit the clerk, because he hasn't done that before, so he probably doesn't even know what's entailed at this point, assuming.
Well, now that, so now that the records are coming, everything comes in directly as the delinquent tax collector money comes in, and then goes back out, that's how the town clerk money comes in now, and goes back out.
So if they were doing...
Everything's coming through my general fund.
So this year...
And then going back out, but to reconcile per monthly reports and stuff, that's something that should be done. See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
But I know what you're saying, you want, if you want them to look into it more, maybe someone, or it should sign a letter, write a letter to them and request that.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to do, to work with our town auditor.
If you're requesting it, you should submit something to Ron in writing, not just a phone call, "Hey, Ron, I think you need to submit something in writing requesting an amount."
Well, I think this ought to be in writing, too, just for the record, so that we're requesting that he does the financial presentation like he did last time.
Right.
You know, as part of the contract.
And I didn't see, and I think the final bill was paid before it came down, Linda.
It was.
The final bill, I think, we'll have to look, we'll have to look into that, because, off the top of my head, I don't remember being billed separately for him coming. I waited for a bill after it came in, and it did not.
Yeah, because I remember we had paid him, and that was one of the questions that he had sent with...
That was a concern, right.
Yeah, 'cause I can...
Okay, but to move on, basically, we need to write him a letter to make sure the presentation is in with this, and then we need to draft some sort of letter, which the Board can review next time, to do with a full audit of the clerk.
Okay, so we don't need to motion the table or anything, no, it's just in our mail.
You can make a motion to do that.
I'd like to make a motion, let me do that. Second.
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Zoning administrative report, there was 10 applications, three verifications, seven permits. There was four homes, an addition, a garage, and a shed. That was permitted. Okay. We have from the BRCRC, Bromley Mountain Expansion Plan, Surface Water Classification Topics, a BCR meeting coming up, September 7th and 8th, Regional Planning Conference. Then we have one from the Bennington County Solid Waste Alliance, their newsletter, about what's going on. Then we have another one from the Bennington County Solid Waste, to do with this proposed agenda for September 13th, 2017, Agenda. Public meeting notice will be held in Arlington Town Hall, time from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. These are the ones that are, attends, and then comes back and reports to us. Okay. We have from the Pono Elementary School, a copy of the Source Protection Plan on the water system for the school. That basically discussed all the landowners, some maps showing where the water protection area is with the school. It's our copy, they had an engineer do this by... Who the engineer was? Kevin Davis from the school senate, maintenance. Let's see if they got the company's name here, with all those people. Maintenance manual, he sent us over the manual, they follow. Department of Environmental Conservation, get in inspection. And that was a Megan Young, System Operations Specialist. We have from the Vermont Housing Conservation Board, a program to do with VHF issues, bonds to the Vermont Housing Conservation Board. Well, we'll grant and loan the proceeds for housing projects statewide. The total is $35 million in bonding. They'll set priorities for projects that people apply for. At least 25% of the housing will be targeted for very low-income homeowners, and then at least 25% of the house will be targeted for middle-income homeowners. And basically, there's a time here for when you're gonna apply for the grant, and the work has to be done by July 1st, 2020, so there's some things. The application will be accepted beginning in the fall of 2017, so that's this year, they can start applying for. Hey, I have Vermont Agency of Transportation, weight permit. Joe has signed this. It's from Artail Escavating. Nate from Artail, what's your pleasure, guys?
Moved to approve it.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I decline.
You're abstaining? Okay, this is, again, a transportation one, this is for William Barney, and basically, Joe has signed off on this and did the things that are needed. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Got one more. This is for Amadon Construction LLC, have to make up a math. Again, Joe has looked at this, signed off on it, and did what he needs to do. What's your pleasure?
Moved to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. We have a letter from the senior center group, who have passed all the stuff over for the old schoolhouse building they were using as a senior center building to meet. They've disbanded now, my understanding?
I don't think they've filed anything with the Secretary of State's office formally.
To disband yet? Okay. And there's a question to do with the sewer bill on it, as well. Who should pay it, who shouldn't? I would say that that's probably something that should be taken up at the sewer commissioner's meeting, sewer bill.
So, I guess we'll step back. So what responsibility do we have with the group disbanding, and all these records, and paperwork?
At this point, I assume the building is closed, electrics turned off, water, they don't have water.
I don't know if the power's protected.
But those are the things, I guess I would say, that at this point...
But are we accepting responsibility of the building now, by accepting this?
Well, if they dissolve, we'd have to look to see how they were formed. There's gotta be something, when they did a 503(c), that talks about, just like the fire departments and rescue squad, they have a formal letter that says that if they disband it automatically returns to the town. We need to see that, to see how it was formed and chartered for the 503(c). That's the only way we could answer that question.
Nelson, to the town, or the school? Back to the school?
Well, the school gave it to the senior center. They actually got a deed to it. So we need to, and if they got a 503(c), which I think they did, they were nonprofit. So basically, we need to see what formed and how they had it written up. Otherwise...
But my question, I guess my question is, should this be going to the school board? Are we accepting responsibility by accepting the letter?
School board got rid of it, from what I understand.
Well, they did. They don't, they no longer own it. The person that owns it is the senior group, and that's why, the only way we can answer this, is to see what their charter says, and how, when they dissolve, where it goes.
I may have that charter, 'cause they gave you the deed and all, and I don't know what...
And it might be going back to the school.
I don't know.
But we don't, we can't answer that until we see...
But didn't they get funds for this year, operation?
Yeah. What they gave us, according to this, they gave us a checkbook...
So who's gonna do this work? Who's gonna do the research?
They have not closed, officially closed their account, and given anything to the treasurer.
Okay. So the step at this point is for the Board to see what the charter says, because why do anything until we know whether it's forfeited over to the town, or forfeited back to the school?
I've never opened it, they just handed it to me, so I don't know what to do.
Right, because Nelson and I would not want to take possession of that account if it doesn't belong to the town. I don't want it to take that over.
Yeah, and I wouldn't until we know the answer.
Exactly.
So, I guess, again, my question is, who's gonna do that?
We need to research it.
Who's gonna do the research?
We're gonna have our administrative assistant, see if she can find that charter.
I'll bring that, I think I've been given it to you when we go from there.
Okay. If we can't find...
You've already had your attorney spend a considerable amount of time on the subject.
Looking at it. Yeah, and we found out who owns the building and so forth. They had a deed. Now, the problem that we have is that, now that the group has dissolved, what does their charter say?
The deed may go back to somebody else.
Our attorney made it clear that the seniors own the building, but they're, just like the firehouses and the rescues, that there's this charter there that says what happens to the building usually, if they have dissolved. And we need to see that, or... And one way to do that is, you might have to go with the, to the state, maybe Bill could help you and find, because they have to record that with the state, whatever that is.
That paperwork might be in the folder, I don't know. I'll bring it in.
Bruce to bring means paperwork.
But I don't want to stand here and debate who owns it and who doesn't own it.
I don't.
At this point, nobody takes anything.
Right.
We...
Nothing's happened, it's just very in limbo.
Yeah, until we find out the...
But they're telling us that they've presented all this, that list of items?
Yeah, that's all they did, was present it.
Okay, so we have that in a folder, and we have that...
It's in the safe somewhere.
Okay.
I didn't want it.
Now, BLC, the Annual Business Meeting Voting Delegates and Procedures, August 15th. This is to, this is their regular yearly meeting? Is that what this is, at the Kellyton?
Town Fair.
Yeah, Town Fair. And we sometimes appoint people to represent our town in voting. I don't know who's going this year, do you?
I am.
So...
Just a couple others that are going.
I would recommend that the Board make a motion, that Linda represent the town in voting.
But you were supposed to last year, and you didn't show up.
I didn't make it. Yeah, I forget what the reason was, it was some reason why I didn't go, but, can't remember. I'd have to go back and look.
I think it had something to do with Cindy.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Operation.
Okay.
Yeah, she did want me around, so...
Leave it at that. Just leave it alone, Nelson, just leave it alone.
Yeah, then you say if you was against you.
She's probably watching, when I get home, I'll get hit with something.
Just leave it alone, Nelson.
Hey, but, okay, but I guess if you're, my recommendation is that we make a motion, because Linda's going, if she represents us.
So moved.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We thank you, Linda. Okay. One more. Land use permit. We have from the, where did this come from? District Gate coordinators for the Act 250. This is to do with a permit issued to Max Construction Limited for their expansion of gravelment, which they have accepted as amended hereon to all the terms and conditions of the land use permit, that they sent through all the mothers. And we have a sheriff report of what was done over the last July 1st to August 1st. 3911, hangups, two fraud cases, three agency assists, two public assists, three burglary alarms, two suspicious events, one accident, two agencies assists, two motor vehicle complaints, two noise complaints, five bin verifications, eight directed patrols, 21 traffic stops all over town, eight tickets issued, 13 written, and verbal warnings, one arrest on a warrant, and one driving with a license criminally suspended. And basically, we have the reports from each officer that did the patrol work. Which is what we've been asking for, which is good.
It's nice to see you.
Household hazardous waste collection. This is for Arlington, Bennington, Dorset, Glassbury, Manchester, Pono, Rupert, Sangay, Steersburg, Shasberry, Stanford, and Sunderland, and Woodford. On Saturday, September 30th, 2017, at 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, at the Dorset School, 130 School Drive, Dorset, Vermont. The collection is free for residents, proof of residency will be required, small business must pre-register and prepay for the amount delivered by September 15th, 2017. And then it goes on and talks about the material you can deliver, but what not to bring is used motor oil, reactive material, smoke and CO2 detectors, Sharpies, like needles and razor blades and things of that nature, tires, explosives, any MO fibers, that sort of stuff, furniture, bulky items, mattresses, scrap metal appliances, electronic waste, other items are allowed. Okay, we'll be saying that again, I'm sure, before the 30th. I mean, at least once more. This one is, State of Vermont is seeking input from local opinion leaders on potential state and local level tobacco, alcohol, marijuana policies. I have been identified, it says you, and it was addressed to me, have been identified as a key member of your community to share your views. Then it goes on to explain, where I can go to a website and respond to this. I'll need a copy of that, or take that with me, whatever. Leave it out. If I can go to the website, give my opinion. Would have any comments on what you wish me to say to any of that? None heard. Okay. All right, then we have a letter from a group of people, and it's in the past. We don't read these from the front to the end, but I will highlight the important parts that are here, so that we can see. One is, they talked about someone asserting that the Planning Commission violated the open meeting laws. I don't know if the Planning Commission did that or not. I know that, I was at one of the meetings where somebody stood up and said that. This has not been addressed by either the Planning Commission or the Select Board. The Select Board received a letter earlier with this same type of issue and complaint, and we passed it on to the Planning Board. The Planning Board, from my understanding, read that letter, they made comments at that meeting, and it's on YouTube, because they called me up, Sid did, and left me a phone message saying that. I have not had a chance to look at the YouTube thing, but they said that they were not forwarding anything more to the Select Board, that they had addressed it at their meeting. So... Then they talk about the fact that Ms. Brusatti had talked to the Planning Board, and some of the members went out all, and they didn't have it at the meeting, which I understand, because Mike Slatter, he also sent me a message that he did do that, he informed her to proceed with that, but that was the Planning Commission, not us. The second possibility was that Ms. Brusatti, as a private citizen, applied. That's what she told us, not when she came in and asked for the application, because the application actually stated, it said Planning Board in it, in the beginning of it. But she has talked to me since then, and basically, her goal was to get that in as quickly as she was, and if you read more in the letter, she said you would've saw where she said that she applied as a personal interest in doing it herself, and that's why it was done, and then the Select Board, as you know, we approved this and moved forward. And the reason why we do that, we do that for several people to come in with grants, not just her. There's been a number of people that's come here, I think back, when Oak Hill was trying to buy their building, they came here, we knew very little about it, they read something to us, said it verbally, we approved it, and told them to go apply for the grant, and they got their money and they bought their building. And I'm trying to think, you know, I've done a ton of planning myself...
Did it for the rescue squad, too.
The rescue squad, also. There's a number of these that we do, and we get very, very little, in a way of a large discussion going on, especially in the community as a whole. We, as a Select Board, make some of those decisions, and we hope that we make them in the right direction and the right way. And we do that based on the information that is told to us at that night, that we can move forward, especially when you have short terms. If, I remember the Oak Hill one, there was a short term, too, where they needed to get the grant in, the same as this one. And I think that through the years, the approval of the Oak Hill one has certainly benefited the town by having the Oak Hill School and stuff here. Now, this one is yet to be seen, because it's just started, the process, from what I understand, and they picked committees, and they're moving forward with it, so, but that's what I see there.
I know, we did one for the seniors, we did some building repairs over here.
Yep.
We did one for the fire pond behind the school, there's a number of them that we've...
Yeah, so I don't, when they talk about by not acknowledging the proper procedure, was not followed, all I can say is, is that we followed the procedure that we normally follow, as a Select Board, and I'm talking for the Select Board, I can't talk for the Planning Board, I'm not a member of that. But we clearly, people come into us and ask for these things, and we listen to them, and then we make a decision on whether or not it's a good move or a bad move, and then we either approve or don't approve, because most of these grants that are given to a town, or any of the businesses in town, or private organizations, has to come through the legislative body in order for them to be submitted. There are some that don't, if the... There are some that don't, but the majority of the ones that we deal with come here because the legislative body has to approve. And I agree, I, with this, keeps changing the story, because part of this program, it keeps moving around, and I, I think everybody's played a part in that. The real thing is, it should be clear, is that somebody came before this board, they asked us to approve entering something in to the, what was the agency?
Rural Development.
Community Development. Development. We approved it, from our understanding, Pono was selected, and then that group held meetings in town with the people that went to those meetings, and so forth. At that point, it wasn't in our hands, it was actually in the volunteers of the town that were involved in it, and that Vermont Community Rural Development. And that's, that I think is the, the facts of how things proceeded with all this. And I do agree that someone said here that they often heard, if people don't like what is going on, they need to get involved. And I, and I agree with that, and I'm glad people are involved, and I'm glad that they're still going to these meetings and having their say, because that's how things change or don't change, is by people speaking up, and you need to do that. And as I said, at this point, Vermont Community Rural Development, I don't even know if they're involved anymore in the town issues, they've listed some experts for these committees, and now it's these committees, and these committees are looking for members, and that's how you get involved, get on those committees and work, and make sure that...
They're still there as a resource, information resource.
Is that what it is? Yeah, I didn't go to the last meeting, you did, so, but... And ultimately, any potential goodness program due, due for Pono has been buried under a manipulative fast-track process that's not allowed for discussion of pros and cons. I disagree with that strongly, because you go to these meetings, you are able to talk and discuss, and before anything happens, let's get those discussions done before, I guess we got a rec committee one, what's the other?
There's a couple agriculture, there's a job growth, there's a business growth.
Yeah, and that's where...
And there's a Vermont cleanup, like a, something similar to a green update, a townwide garbage pickup on our roads.
Yeah, and I think rather than this board keep being looked at as trying to manipulate this or anything else, the bottom line with this board at this point is, we're waiting for those committees to come back, if they do, and ask us for what, what it might be that we can do to assist or so forth.
They're all meeting this month, and there are dates that, maybe we should try to get that, get our information for our new website to the, to the, to the leaders of each group, and they can put their information, their meeting times and dates on our site, or they can pass.
On our website.
Yeah, add that to our calendar.
Yeah, and I think we should do that, and it's, it's good that our website is up, I think it's very helpful for people to understand when all this stuff occurs, and I don't know how these groups are doing, if they're doing minutes or not doing minutes, if they are, that it would be good to, or at least a brief discussion of what they had, so they can put it up.
Well, each group is doing something different, I think one of them's gonna do a potluck dinner, a couple of them have a lot of members, a couple of them just have a few. The agriculture one is gonna be like a farmer get together type of thing, you know, meeting, where they're kind of meet and greet.
And I got something sent to me, either from the State of Vermont, or from the BRC, I forget which one, but to do with a recreational meeting that's occurred for the Bennington County region, and so I sent it off to them, and from my understanding, it's they're gonna send that to the rec committee, so that they can attend, which is what we want, because we really want a regional wide one if we're gonna do this, and have it work right. Okay, and, and I guess it says Governor Badi is to investigate and take legal, on the legality and the process used in this, it's one of the reasons why we sent the letter back to the planning commission, we wanted them to be aware that there was concerns voiced, and that they need to address that. And from my understanding, they did address that, and I'm hoping from this point forward that the process that they take is different than what it was. I can't speak for them. That our officials tonight even acknowledge discrepancies and contradictions, again, I think that's been a little on all sides, because the information isn't out there enough for people to even go ask, so you're getting misinformation from one side, and you're getting partially information from somewhere else, and I'm hoping tonight, by me saying that us as a legislative body did what we normally do, somebody came in, asked for something, we approved it, signed off on the letter, it went in, and Pono was chosen, which we're very glad to see, and now it was up to that group to proceed with whatever actions they're taking. Again, if they need large resources or something else, they'll have to come back to us again for us to approve any grant applications they're applying for, so, in certain proportion, because there might be some grants that already they can apply for, I know there's like historical and some other things people can apply for on their own, so it's, it might be trail money, too, I don't know if that's something we have to approve, or if there's a type grant that they can apply for recreational type things. But there's tons of grants out there, and that's where it's at. Now, open the floor, does the select board have anything else they wish to say? Any other members?
No.
Comments, questions? Thank you. That's our man. And I need to do that one, because I need to address that to do with drugs.
Can you make sure I get a copy?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna take it with me, I'm gonna, you want, you leave it in the mail, and you can put it in my, that's the best one.
I would like to take a copy.
Yeah, then you can put it in my box, I'll do it on the... Okay. Administrative assistant report.
Okay, so it's been a while since we met.
Let me rest my mouth.
Yeah. Uh, I said, I dealt with a couple of insurance issues, the town was billed $1,000 for the claims submitted for the transfer station, it's the deductible, unfortunately. Followed up with the sheriff's department on the fireworks complaint, and the racecar that was parked at the warehouse, which has since been removed.
Thank you.
We are still waiting for our new server for the office, Chuck Watson will be in Pono on September 11th, and he plans to attend the September 21st meeting to talk to the board about the telephone upgrade and copier replacement. Bill Scully and I research Green Mountain Electric Accounts for the town as part of the net metering group, as you know, the hydro is online. Staff met with Jen Hawley to gather contents for our new website, and that process has since been ongoing, since the initial meeting. I worked with the treasurer on the fund balances, and worked with DOT and the road foreman with the final revisions to Pono's excess weight permit application. The board was supplied a copy, you should find one in your packets tonight, that's the final that we're working with. Worked with the listers and the chief operator to review and edit the sewer accounts to correspond with the grant list. Quarter one sewer bills have been issued, filled several requests for public records. The sheriff's department is updating their traffic ordinance books, and have requested Pono update their traffic ordinances and schedule of fines. I've been working with them to develop a traffic ordinance for Pono, and I've asked the help of the road foreman to assist with that. I've looked at different ones from different towns, and Woodford appears to have one that's very easy to read and follow, and checking that one out a little bit closer. The purpose is to update the town speed ordinances, right now, when I had to try to supply information to the sheriffs, all we have is just a speed ordinance that was approved on a certain day, there's a certain year, it has no code, they're random, they're all over the place, they're in the Freeman records, they're just scattered, and so this compiles them, since they're already recorded, this compiles them, and it actually states, will state, you know, on every road, every road in town is posted at 35 miles an hour, if you exceed it, there's a fine that corresponds with that, it addresses the speed, the stop signs, where they are, things of that nature. So the purpose is to update and to bring it into current time, and it should, the most important key here is that it should provide more fine revenue back to the Pono rather than per state statute, because we don't have this in place, the sheriffs follow state statute at this time. So this is, will be very beneficial. The municipal, the municipal ordinance is subject to a public hearing adoption process, and if no petition is filed, challenging the ordinance is effective 60 days after its adoption, so the first step is to get a draft to the, of the ordinance to the board to review, okay? So that's gonna be, that's a project in itself, so I'm thinking that'll probably take, probably from start to finish, up to the first of the year, because the 60 days in itself for the ordinance is two months. Some of the office staff will be attending a seminar in Rutland on September 12th. I do believe at least someone will be here, so I expect someone will be here to keep the office going. If not, it'll be posted.
What's the seminar on?
Um, it's a, you know, can't remember the exact name of it, but it was in the warrants this evening.
Well, you don't know what it's about?
Excuse me, you got me up guard in the middle of my report, I'll look that up for you.
Thank you.
It's in the warrants.
Thank you.
And one thing I wanted to bring to the board's attention is that I've noticed the large, the large maple tree in front of the office has several dead limbs, it involves electrical wires, and I think you should have Dave Dentz look at it to see, you know, what can be trimmed off, that maybe get a quote.
I agree. And I think if there's wires involved, they take care of that, we learned that.
It's on our property line.
Right.
Yeah, they took down one.
On the other side. It's dying, unfortunately.
Have Dave come look at it.
Yeah, how much more you got for your report?
I'm done.
Okay, a couple things, one is this tree, let's deal with that first. You got a motion to have Dave Dentz come down and look at it?
He's our tree warden, so he can...
And he can give us a quote, and then we can approve.
Or he can tell us what to do with it, and then we can put it out to them.
Okay.
I think we've also asked him to go to the Strobridge Rec Park, too, because we've tried to get him to trim some of the trees down there for us, too, but I don't think he's had time to do it.
Well, we can, we'll have Linda, let's have Linda talk to him about versus the motion, talk to him, get those things, and find out when he can do them, and what it means involved out here, because it's real expensive, we'll have to go to bid, if it isn't, we can just get it done.
Would you need tree trimming down at the...
Yeah, and I believe Cindy and Ruth Batso have talked to him about it, but I don't think he's, he's had a chance to get down there.
It's right around the flagpole, in that area there, you'll see him, it's, it's gonna tangle up with the flag and stuff if they don't deal with it, so. Okay, that was that. The other thing I, I wanted to do, when you talked about ordinances, was this ordinance we started and then didn't go forward with, was to do with assembly.
Large gathering.
Large gathering, we need to yank that out, and if we're warning something, we should probably be warning that at the same time, and if there's some wording that needs to be changed, these guys will have to address it, so we can warn it. Because we got more...
Has the board looked at it?
Well, they all had a copy of it, I think we looked at it back then.
About a while ago.
And they need to, they need to look at it again, and basically, one of the questions back then was, what would we charge for a P, and I don't think we had a P.
You know, we talked about some other towns, you know, what they had, you know...
Charge. But that's where we're at. But, and the other thing, we talked about the phones you did, what about the server? Where's the status of that?
It's on order.
So he has, it's all been decided?
It's on order, as far as I know, that's why he's coming to see us on Monday.
Take good. Okay, that's all I had, for that. Where's our road foreman?
Have you pulled up?
Just push those orange things down that way. No.
Okay.
How you doing tonight, everybody?
What do you got for us?
Okay. As you saw in my report, excuse me, we're finishing up the Man Hill project, a couple small things we gotta do. I'm waiting on the phone company for one, for some wires and a coil that's hanging out of the bank. Road grading, we started our fall road grading in between showers again, this is, we got started, it rains every other day. We patched a bunch of holes in the blacktop roads and Main Street Bridge again down there. Doing some mowing, equipment maintenance, down trees, we always got them, called out on them. Next week, Strohmeyer Road, we actually started a little bit on that today. Roadside mowing, equipment maintenance, we gotta do, put some gravel on Man Hill Road, that's one of the things. Also, our blacktop is completed, and at some point in the future, we gotta address the shoulders up from the blacktop, and get down through and do them, which is gonna take a little bit. We do have the sand bids out, they're due back the 20th.
Yes, I was gonna ask, the 20th, September 20th, date being by 3:00 PM, according to this, is that what you're looking at?
Yeah. And we got some quotes on fuel.
Before we go to the quotes, I'm sorry, I know we spoke about Snake Hill, and we need to deal with that, and there's a big problem there and everything, but the person that complained to me wondered if we could put some gravel or something on the side, because it's just falling right off, even, even though the...
Where are they?
The side road, the...
Guardrails.
Guardrail is right to the middle of the road.
Yeah.
But they're still concerned about driving down it, and do we have, we have it all flagged out and everything right, so?
Yeah, they put guardrails, actually...
It doesn't get much traffic, I know, but the people that live there are really concerned about it.
If I remember, that was before my time, you know more about that than I do as far as the discussion.
I just went up there, within the last several weeks, I was up there and see it, yeah. Basically, it's fallen away enough that, but it's been there, that now you've got grass and weeds that have grown up around it, so people who are driving there might not recognize that that's all falling away, and I think, you know, we were gonna have an engineer look at it, I don't know where we stand with that, but at some point, we need to address it.
Well, I thought this year, I would put in for a grant for engineering on that project, and...
Sounds pretty scary to me, I haven't driven up it or anything, but just from listening to them come down it all the time, sounds pretty scary.
It's a long ways down there. I don't know, I remember, you guys talked about a lot of different...
Yeah, that, well, the real thing is, I guess, when Casey was here, he actually had some people look at that, and talk about several ways to deal with it, but no, no decision was made, because I don't think there was any firm price that ever brought it in.
Well, we had an engineer that was interested in it, but his quote was...
Yeah, yeah.
Was a lot of money. We thought, at the time, when we talked to the state, the state said we could apply for a grant specifically for the engineering, the engineer made, made, could, there's many different options we could do there, so I think before we can pull, you know, pull ideas out of a hat, we need to have a professional look at it and say, this is what you can do and what you can't do.
Well, I'm gonna stretch that a little bit, if I remember correctly, there's a brook down below there, and with all this water protection that's going on, is there not money to have somebody to look at that, so that brook doesn't get contaminated with that stuff that's dropping in it?
There's money to remedy the problem, I would say, you'd have to apply for it, but we do need to...
Know what it is, well, yeah, I'm wondering if...
Yeah.
Well, I'm just saying, ask the BRC if there's not money that's, for what you're saying... Well, I'm just saying, ask the B C R C if there's not money that's, for like you're saying, the engineering and the actual correction of it.
What is it? Bank stabilization is what it is.
Yeah.
Yep.
But it's a major, 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 major project.
Well, we had people driving filings and all kinds of other stuff suggesting, which, I mean, that's not cheap. Not on a bank that size.
Well, I...
I'm just thinking that you're saying you want to go out and try to get some money to take in, have an engineer come in. There might be some already available because of where the brook's there. And we should be...
We could ask.
We should ask and see if, that'll just fast track a little better if there is. Because there's so little traffic going up there, most people don't think of it, other than the people that's living there. But in reality, with this whole, well, you've seen the mail we've been getting from the state to do with water runoff. And if Ronnie was here, he'd tell you all about water runoff. And we just need to see if they're willing to help.
Yep.
We could ask. I think the emphasis right now though is more on tubs, tubs and...
Ladbrokes.
And ladbrokes.
That's where...
The two, huh?
Yeah.
The two big ones right now.
Yep.
I say just add, keep adding to that list.
Well, like I said, what I plan on doing is, and I have been to this year, see if we can get some money for engineering on that. And then take it from there, I guess.
Have we talked about it with our new guy? With our new engineer?
I have a little bit, yeah. He is interested, but do we wanna, I could ask him, you know?
Just to give us my, you know, I don't know.
Give an idea of what it costs. Do the engineering. At least do the study. Because then when we apply for a grant, we can say, here's the program, here's what's gonna be done.
Well, it was brought to my attention, so I wanted to bring it up and make sure it's not a safety issue and everything else.
How do you plow up there?
I was thinking the same thing.
You can get through, no, no. You get through with the big truck. I go up through with it. With a tandem, I go up through.
Well, that's good.
Okay. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, that's fine. That's something we needed to address. But it is something, it's an ongoing thing and I know way before I even got here.
Well, my concern is that we could end up with what we did with the other road. All of a sudden, it becomes non-passable.
Right.
But it looked to me like we kinda stopped with the engineering. We just never went any farther.
And the tenants were a little concerned because we paved hard for a long road.
Well, we just went five hundred feet.
Right. Which they understood. I explained it to her and she understood.
The road was paved halfway up the hill and stopped and it was a big problem in the spring. The big problem for the gravel running, it was gravel pretty near all the way down through. So, we just made that little jump up on the top of the hill. That's why we did that.
No, I think actually this year, by finishing off the two roads and catching something like that, we're finishing some things up which will lead us into doing other things.
Well, Dean Roden, who needs doing real bad, I wanted to have him actually run up the side and they had an excuse and couldn't do it, but I wanted to at least shim that one side this year. And maybe it's, still, maybe I can check with somebody and get a price on it, you know, to see what it'll be. But it does need addressing. It's pretty bad. There's, you know, going back to, we need a lot of blacktoping. Every time you put some somewhere, somebody else wants, it's one of them things. I'd like to do a lot and hopefully next year, we can do a bunch more.
All the people that go out to the transfer station that I've met and talked to are very happy with what's out there. You know, the North Pownell Road the same. So, a lot of traffic on both of those roads. I mean, a lot. Okay. What else you got?
The fuel, I guess, do we wanna go, we kinda talked about that, with a fluctuating price like we did last year?
It's higher than heck.
Well, it is right now, but they're not really predicting it to stay up.
No, they're predicting it to go down actually.
Go back down, yeah, I know.
Depends how hard Florida gets it. That'll be the next one.
There's another, yeah, I know, I know. Any excuse, you know? So...
So, did you have some quotes from some people?
We did. West Oil. They had a fixed price of twenty-three cents a gallon on top of, they use New York Journal Commerce of Albany Low. John Ray and Son, which we've been using, they were twenty-two cents over. These prices I got, out of two of them, actually, were on the thirtieth. West just gave me theirs today. So, today's price would be two dollars, two oh four, basically, a gallon. As of August thirtieth, John Ray would have been a dollar ninety-four. Bov also gave us a quote. They were at twenty cents, but their rack price, see, they all use different...
Suppliers.
Suppliers. John Ray gets it out of Apex and Rensselaer. These guys get it out of Albany, Port Albany. So, everybody uses. They're all gonna be pretty close.
How is Jay, John, yeah, Ray and Sons, are they okay?
Yeah, we haven't had any problems with fuel.
No? No. Nothing jailing and everything else working good?
It says diesel fuel, right?
What'd you pay last year? You remember?
It fluctuated.
Well...
Must have a guy here what the average was, right?
It was, yeah, I don't know, to be honest with you, what the average was.
You can look at your Spanish shares and your sources.
It was, it was...
Diesel fuel right now is down compared to last year.
Yeah, it is, yeah. The last bill we had in was a dollar eighty-eight, right?
It's pretty, pretty good savings by putting it out to bid this way.
Right, I agree.
So, apparently, it's not too much.
Who was the low bid?
I think John Ray, like I said, they were all right in there, pretty tight.
I would recommend that the board make a motion to continue with John Ray. And if they want it, if the foreman's recommending that it floats, then let it float.
I'll second that.
Keep it the way it is.
You make the motion.
Sure. And we're locking that in the price right now?
We're not locking in. We're locking in...
Who we buy it from?
Yeah, but we're locking in so much delivered over the rack price at the time. Okay?
So, that could either go up or go down?
Well, the price of fuel will. But we'll pay John Ray's twenty-two cents. Bov was twenty cents.
Yeah.
But the rack was higher.
The rack was, they were actually, when it washed out at that time, they were three cents more.
Yeah.
Which hadn't fifty, it was like four hundred and fifty bucks.
But to answer your question, basically, we're moving, but the price is gonna fluctuate because it's gonna be based on the rack.
I understand.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 You can let them know. Hey, nope.
Sand bid status?
Pardon?
Sand bid status?
Well, no, they're due on the twentieth. I just wanted, I do have them out.
I think that's on the website. I think I saw it.
It is. It is. I had her put it out.
We have suppliers that are interested in supplying us.
Actually, two right now.
Two sand suppliers.
Well, three.
Okay.
Good.
Okay.
One of them I haven't heard from, two I have. The Mount Anthony Culvert, they're putting it together as we speak.
Saw them out there.
Yeah.
I was gonna look, I saw your truck was down there when I came home.
It's coming pretty good. It's coming pretty good. I think they'll have it all together tomorrow.
I was surprised when you said it was a piecemeal thing, where they put it together.
It's all in pieces, yeah, yeah.
Jigsaw puzzle.
So, I hope in the beginning of next week, they'll have it filled and we can be traveling on it again.
Be able to open it up again? Good.
You know what happened to the sign up at Foster's? Do we have another one by any chance?
I put one there. Is it gone again?
It was gone the other day when I came down up from Sally Donison's.
Did you put one today up there, sell it to?
No. I put it up there.
I came down Monday.
Tuesday I put it up.
Oh, okay, then.
Tuesday was, you told me. And actually, the lady called here too, I guess. Yeah. Tuesday, I took a plastic sign, you know, a regular made sign, and screwed it to a saw. The other one was on a nice stand and aluminum stand and that was gone. So, this one, I figured they'd have to work a little bit to get it.
Long as they got some.
Well, it was there.
Oh, I know it was there.
I have it, yeah.
I've been by a couple of times.
Well, for the people out there, when you remove road closed signs and other things, you're putting people's lives at risk because they could drive and fall into a road that's dug across. We would urge you not to take road closed signs for that reason. Any other thing you have?
Stuff in it, like...
Now, it's a big thing with kids, they're still collecting signs.
Oh, yeah.
Every kid needs one in his bedroom.
Well, now in all the colleges, it's back and you got a ton of kids.
Any questions you guys have on anything else?
No, I think we asked them.
Are we gonna do anything about road reclassification? Is the board still pursuing this? It's on the agenda a couple of times.
There is one we should pursue. It's a time to do it.
There's two I think of, the renters and Labinos.
Well, that one, yeah.
And Labinos are the two.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the one you were thinking of?
Yeah.
Why don't we just start warning them, notify the people that we're doing it, go through the process. We'll get these two out of the way, we'll learn how to do this. And then we can move on others if we need to. Otherwise, you're just gonna keep talking about, we know those two should be taken care of, so let's do it.
Well, there hasn't been anybody in Labinos in a long, long time.
Well, and there's a culvert there that if, we have to replace that, you're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars. And it's, and we just fixed it, so it's...
So, how far do we want to pursue it?
We're gonna do the warnings. We're gonna notify the people, we're gonna warn it, we're gonna proceed like we're gonna do away with them. And if they don't come in, we will take the process and take the legal action to remove them from our list.
And if they do choose to fight it, how much do we plan to invest?
Well, we'll find out when it gets there. Let's see if that happens. And we'll deal with that when we get to...
Labinos and real estate, they got a sign out on the bottom.
Yeah. Let's do that for now.
And there hasn't been anybody for years and years, the places are in bad shape.
Yeah.
So, I don't...
Okay, any, anything else?
See any sense.
We thank you for coming.
Thanks, Joe.
I guess we're gonna, we got one more thing after, or you want me to stay for the...
Yeah, if you want.
Talk a little about them, I guess.
Yep. Keep doing some. Okay. New business. Selectment appointments for vacancies. B C R C delegate Rebecca Dragon, you here?
I am.
What would you like to make a statement before the board takes action? Or...
Sure, I'm interested in the position. I would, I'm very interested in making sure that Pownell doesn't get lost in regionalization. I think there's danger of that. And I want to really know what's going on so that someone's at these meetings and coming and reporting to you what's, what's new on the board there and what their new programs are and how they're thinking about things. So, however I can serve best.
Did you get a chance to talk to Jim Sullivan?
I emailed with Jim Sullivan and we are going to meet and have a meeting. And he's gonna give me a big rundown of everything. So, I'm in contact, so it's not gonna happen next week probably.
Yeah.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
But I'm not familiar with our procedure on appointing somebody. Can you tell us what it is?
Basically, what we do each year in March is we appoint people to these various committees that serve in different places. And at B C R C, we currently have an opening where nobody applied for it. And then what we're gonna do is appoint, and what's the term on this one?
It's a three-year term with an expiration date of March twenty eighteen. She would fill that remainder of the term and then see full...
Secret appointment at that time.
So, there doesn't have to be any specific qualifications or anything, we can appoint anyone.
Well, the qualifications are that we want people that are interested and that'll go to the meetings and be active and bring back reports to us that are helpful to us.
To that, I have, I mean, I did attend the energy meeting. I have already been, you know, trying to be involved. I read their entire regional energy plan.
I think it's great. I think it's great that we have people that are interested. I just wasn't familiar with the policy.
Yeah. And they have several committees. And the one that I talked about was transportation. As you heard our road foreman tonight talk about trying to do that bridge down in Pownell Village. I just know years ago, when we had the North Pownell Bridge and the situation it was in, they had a transportation committee. And the way you went to that and you discussed what the issues were. And the issue there was that if the bridge went out, there was like thirty-six homes that weren't gonna have a way across the river. They were stranded. Now, I don't know how many homes are across from this one down there. But there's a ton of them and they'd have to go all the way to Williams Town and Out.
Right.
So, those are the sort of things that, when you go to a transportation meeting and you try to move our bridge up on the ladder, because there's usually other towns that are in there, and you're competing for dollars out of the state and for these things. And this we've been working, and this one we've been working on for, I don't know, we put a deck on it there, I don't know how long.
It's due here pretty soon.
Yeah, well, I mean, we just put a coat on it.
I think they pieced it together. They never really did much for the whole bridge.
No, we fixed the rails on the side a couple of times. We've done, we've done several things over the twenty-some years that I've been here, but it's definitely in need.
Needs a new membrane.
It's a huge, huge price tag.
So, maybe someone that can actually really sit down with me and tell me all of that. And then when I speak with Jim Sullivan and I'll start figuring out.
Yeah, ask him if there's still a transportation committee and ask him about that sort of stuff with the bridge.
There's other aspects that I'm also interested in, but I'm absolutely, whatever you guys want me to do, I'm happy to do it.
Well, they're, well...
Tell me about the bridge and I will go deal with the bridge.
Well, you can ask, you get the opportunity beyond more than one committee, he'll let you know.
Oh, yeah. I never heard that. I heard they keep you busy. I heard they keep you busy, so...
Yeah, they keep you pretty busy.
Well, thank you for being willing.
Thank you. I'm happy to do it.
And it's nice that you have an opportunity to kind of look at it for the next, before you take it three years.
Right, it's not three years right now, right? In March, we can reassess.
Okay. So, with that, I'd like to take a motion from the board to appoint.
So moved.
I'll second.
Go ahead.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay. Then we have someone that was interested in the Development Review Board, Fred Miller. Well, can you tell us about yourself and what you're interested in?
Myself, I'm a lifelong Pownellite. Recently, I made the decision to retire and hoping to just enjoy a quiet retirement in Pownell as I've always known Pownell to be.
And you want to be on the Development Review Board and be quiet?
I became aware things were starting to happen in Pownell about the week after I retired. And I decided I wanted to be active and, you know, do whatever I can to help with the process. I don't want to see the baby thrown out with the bathwater personally. And I think I got a lot of insight and a lot of, a lot of good things I can do.
Okay. Well, basically, the Development Review Board are handled permits for subdivisions, are handled permits for business and conditional use type permits. So, that's the sort of thing you'd be processing with a number of other people that's on that board. Setting conditions if they're needed or not. But it's basically a very important board for businesses that might come to town or businesses that are here that wish to expand, just so you understand what part of that process is.
Absolutely, yeah.[1756.99]
Okay?
Uh, once again, Fred would be filling the remainder of a three-year term due to expire in March twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen, okay. I give them a chance to test it?
Get it straight, what?
Okay, so what's your pleasure, board?
I make a motion to appoint him.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Uh, treasurer?
Yes?
You, uh, have some things here you want us to do?
Yes, and we should hopefully, did you give them the criteria?
You guys are welcome to leave if you want.
Yeah, so they can stay and listen or, this is a public venue. Okay. You're looking for us to? Move some money, is that what you're saying?
Right, because of doing accruals, um, we had paid some bills in, um, July and August that were for F Y seventeen, to which overspent some of your fund balance lines, so we need to take money from the, um, fund balance reserve and it goes under designated funds into the fund balance expense line for those specific accounts. There's two of them, the legal fund, seventeen hundred and I think ninety dollars and change.
Sixty-six cents.
Yep, and then, um, the transfer station equipment fund reserve into the transfer station equipment fund expense line, about seven hundred and a lot in change.
Basically, this is related to the general fund and the general fund only? Basically, what, uh, if we could get a motion to, uh, move the, the statements as she said, or you can read off what's on the slip if you've got them and make a motion that way, to move from legal fund reserve to legal fund.
I, I move, we make a motion, we move that money.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Done.
Okay. Okay, review fund balances.
Do you have to transfer station one, you got one here?
Yep, he, he read, we just done both and he did them. Made a motion to do both of them.
Next.
And the, and the, I gave you your F Y seventeen fund balance sheets, um, and, and they can, the general fund is going to change some because of two things, one, because of reviewing with you guys tonight, I just saw something that needs to be changed, so it's gonna change your fund ba- undesignedated fund balance. And also, moving money changes your fund balances, okay? So the, the F Y seventeen sheet that I gave you that says number three, un-audited.
Yep.
You're gonna get a number four, okay?
Yeah, the first two is because, um.
Right, and it, well, and Dave and I have gone over these, but, um, because I just went over the report again, I found something else, which happens when you, when you do accounting, so, um, the thing that I just found this evening, so everybody doesn't get all upset, is when, when you void a check, if you void it in F Y eighteen and it was cut in F Y seventeen, now I have to make that be voided in F Y seventeen, so I need to do some journal entries and, and fix that. Okay, so otherwise, and, and so the road, as you see, looking at these reports, um, neither the general fund nor the road fund is overspent, so everybody can rest assured.
Good news, Joel.
Because I've heard a lot of, you know.
Yeah, a lot of noise out there.
We heard rumors too.
Right, well, and, 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 and it's all because, short-term, all it has to do with is the loan, taking out a loan. A short-term loan goes on your liability line in your reports. Anything over a year is considered a long-term loan. I consider long-term like thirty, but long-term is anything over that happens outside of a, one individual budget. That doesn't go under a liability line, comes in as revenue, out as an expense, period, so it's just an accounting thing. So besides that?
All right.
All's good.
And all's good.
Okay, we're in good standings.
Were we gonna take a motion, Ellen, about what to do with the, uh, fund money when it comes back?
Why don't we do that, can we do that? Do I have to do an actual policy or we can just put it in the minutes?
Just put it in the minutes and then we agree that that's when the money comes back.
Comes back, we just do that?
Okay, we, we, that's the twenty thousand or something.
Well.
Anyway.
Any, anytime.
I, I think, I think that's the wrong thing to do.
For specific funds?
Well, Blacktop, I don't have any trouble with what I'm.
What about Culver?
You know, I guess where I'm at is, we should be dealing each one separately as they come, only because we don't know what the issues are with each one. This one, I understand fully, that it's related to the Blacktop, we got money coming back from the Blacktop, should go in the Blacktop.
Younger grants, structures.
Yeah, and it could be structured ones that comes in and goes back to the, well.
Goes back into the Culver.
It would go back into the Culver fund.
But is it only the Culver fund that we get structures grants, or do we get grants for other things?
Culverts.
Okay, so, so I'm understanding the motion is it's for Culver grants and Blacktop.
Exactly.
Well, any, anything we do.
That's why I wanna know what it is.
No, listen, listen to what he has to say, let him finish.
Like, um, this grant, um, for Man Hill Road.
Yeah.
Um, we're taking, you see, we have to expense that out, um, under your gravel and riprap, you know, for your stone and, um, the equipment and all that stuff. So, we're actually taking that out of our line items. So when we get this money back in, I'd like to put it back into our line items.
No, that's what, that's why.
We can't do that, that's what I tried to explain to you outside of that.
And that's why I'm.
Only when, only the money that comes from the fund can be put back in the fund.
I agree with.
When you expense out of your expense lines, it goes into revenue, out expense. It's not going to go back into your specific fu- expense lines.
What happens is then we.
But it's gonna offset it because it's coming in as a revenue.
Here's.
But then.
So you won't be overspent technically.
Well, we won't, the whole budget won't, but you'll have line items.
But the revenue line will, will cover those line items that are overspent. It will ballot, it will just ba- no, it automatically balances out.
And yeah.
Because we don't budget for the grant money to come, we didn't budget for the grant money to come in.
Yeah.
So you're gonna have, if you overspent your equipment line, your equipment ma- maintenance line or your gravel line by five thousand dollars, and you got five thousand back from the grant, that's gonna come in a revenue line, five thousand, your expense line, five thousand, it's gonna be zero. So even though it shows an overspent, when people ask at town meeting, we're gonna say, but we took in five thousand that we didn't budget for, for revenue, and it covers it, Joel.
And that's why I'm saying what I'm saying.
Right, I get what you're saying.
I, I have no trouble with these two grants as you're talking about, the Culvert, because we get Culvert money and we get Culvert money back from the state. Same with Blacktop.
I'm saying speci- anything that's specific for a fund from a fund.
That to me.
Should go back into the fund.
Yeah, you know, if, if, if the state was doing something with trucks and the grants to buy equipment, then fine, it, I'm okay with that. What I'm more worried about is, this board won't be here in the future, and you're gonna have concerns like he just voiced.
And if you need me to come, everyone, then, then we'll have to work together and do that, or whomever is treasurer.
Because those special, well, those special.
At the time.
Well, and the special ones, we need to deal that way, is where I'm at. But the, the ones like the Culvert and the Blacktop, I have no trouble with the board setting down and making a statement that that's clear for those type of grants that come in. But the motion would be to do, deal with those two things, because you never know what's coming down the road or how restrictions are on. So, and, but these two, we understand. So, that's where I would, if the board wishes to make a motion, I'd make a motion for the Culvert funds and the Blacktop grants to go back into the fund when they come in.
Otherwise, they're going into a pot called undesignedated funds.
That's right, and then they get spread anywhere.
And then, and then at budget time, you either give it back to people or you can put it in the specific funds you want it to go into. So you can do it either way, but.
But this way here, it'll show up when.
But this way, it's guaranteed in that money.
I'll move that we, we do that.
Yeah, because.
Your decision would already be made for you.
That's right, well, when we get ready to see the budget, we'll see the money in there versus, where the hell is it, right?
As long as it's come in.
But people don't understand, people don't understand that is worse problem. If, if you have a bunch of line items that, you know, you overspent, people don't understand that, you know, even though you brought the money back in, that's.
We have to, we have to explain, if we overspent a line, we will explain why that line is overspent. I think it's clear, we can explain why grant money comes back and goes back into the fund when the grant money comes.
Linda.
And that's where I would be.
Doesn't all culvert, when you do a culvert expense, it doesn't all come from the culvert expense?
It all comes from the culvert.
Expense line. So it doesn't come from the gravel fund line and the.
We move it, don't we move it? At the end? I, when I, when I pay the bills, I just take it all from wherever the expense line is.
Right, but that, what I'm saying is if we're doing a culvert, if we're replacing a culvert, it doesn't all come from that culvert expense line, only the culvert itself comes from that line.
Culvert expense line, if it's overspent because the culvert costs more than what was budgeted.
Right, right, that's what I'm asking, but. But the use of, yeah, but, but the use of the equipment and stuff doesn't get cut from that culvert expense line?
No.
That's what I'm asking?
No.
Okay.
No, and, and that's why, I'm just thinking not just of, of me sitting here and us, but people, you want people to better understand.
But you only get a percentage back, you don't get a hundred percent back.
But that's why I'm fine with moving, I, I'll go back to it, I'm fine with moving things that are clearly cut by the state that says this.
Those two are clear, cut and dry.
And to me, that, that makes it a lot easier, because then these, and we won't spend it by thinking that somewhere we're, oh, we look at this line and see we got this kind of money, let's put it where it belongs, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
And we got a motion and we got a second to do that, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So when those money comes back, they go where they belong.
Okay, if I can have a copy of the minutes so I can put it in the folder.
But I agree, I agree with Joel too, though, it does look, it does look funny when you go to look at the budget and six months from now, we're gonna forget, someone's gonna ask us, we're gonna forget, we're not gonna be able to answer it.
And then we're gonna have to discuss it.
Without researching it and looking, going back.
We should have a copy of it in our minutes, this meeting.
At, at the time, you know, we apply for grants, we're doing the budget and we don't really know.
If you're gonna get it or not.
If we're gonna get it or not, yeah.
So you have to budget as if you're not.
That's right.
Is, is the answer to that question, Joel. We don't know we're gonna get a grant.
We just don't do the job, a lot of times, we'll, you know, put in work.
But you still have to, but, right, but you have, you're supposed to, you gotta budget for what you think you're gonna spend. And then if you don't spend it, it becomes an undesignedated monies and then it can go wherever.
Okay, I'm gonna, eh, thank you. Okay, now we have a person here, Paul Goyette.
Yep.
Off-road motorcycle race, North Pownell, tell us what you're doing there.
Well, I would like to, yeah, absolutely. I was approached by.
Before that, if you just wanna introduce yourself, maybe?
Absolutely, thank you very much for having me, my name's Paul Goyette, I run the, uh, race series. It's called New York Offroad, um, I've been involved with the J Day series for quite a bit, which is a event that's run in New England, um, motorcycle series, it started about six, seven years ago. Um, and now I'm a Tucker Rocky rep for a motorcycle company, distribution, parts, services. And I have all this area, Vermont, New York, a little bit of Massachusetts is my area, my, all my companies that I deal with, all the parts, anyways, a lot of them had asked if we could have a J Day in this area and from here north. Um, and they didn't wanna, John didn't, he's a gentleman who runs J Day, didn't wanna come out this way. It's a little bit far of a travel for guys coming from Boston and further south, so I started the race series. This is my third race that I'm having now, um, and it's been, I've been in Fort Dan, New York, I've been in Putney, Vermont, and I've had nothing but good things said, I haven't heard any bad, um, no bad mojo, nothing crazy. So I was approached by John Goslin, who lives here in Pownell, um, to go to Donovan's Pit. Uh, and I went over there and looked at it, and it's a beautiful place, um, the layout, it's, you know, I try to keep it safe for kids. I've been helping kids for training and helping them for about thirty years now. And, uh, so I'm just looking for something else for everybody doing, not just kids. Um, so when my dealers asked me to have, uh, some races this way, I said, I'll do what I can. And this is my third installment of the races, and this is a, just a flyer of the, what would, what would happen here as a race. Um, and it's open to everyone, from kids, uh, five years old and older.
How many property owners involved?
There is just one property owner, and it's.
And you've talked to him?
Sean Donovan and his wife, yes.
Okay.
Um, I got, talked, spoke with Crystal on the, um, rescue squad.
Rescue squad.
Yeah, emergency rescue squad today, um, I'd like to give a donation to the town, you know, to the rescue squad. Uh, she was gonna have, um, gonna have us, or a squad show up at the race.
We're gonna have, I don't know if both squads will be on scene, but we're definitely having one squad on scene. And then, um, we've talked briefly, cause she had a meeting.
She just, yep, she, I talked to her today, yes.
But there's gonna be a group of us there from the, from the rescue squad, and, um, I, I'm not sure if you run these the same as J Day, if there's not a squad on scene, you have to stop the race until we come back.
If there's not a squad on scene, we stop and.
Until we come back.
Okay, so when, when are you planning this?
Uh, the seventeenth of September, which is next Sunday.
Coming up fast.
And it's off Dean Road in, in North Pownell?
Yes, it is, yeah.
Basically, uh, how many people?
Um, there'll be about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty participants. Um, you know, if grandparents can come, kids, it's open to spectators.
So would you say there's five hundred the max, four hundred?
Five hundred max, I would say, yeah.
Okay.
I would say four to five.
Is there like a track up there or something?
There is not, um, you just put a little layout, uh, they have the fields there, there's, uh, plenty of woods, um, you know, and then afterwards, I go and clean everything back up, make it look like nothing was ever there, but, uh, I'd like to see how it works out.
Okay, uh, I guess the question, uh, that I have, at this point, you're looking at the gravel bed area and the woods there?
Yep, just in the area right there, yeah.
Okay, and basically, you, you got adequate parking for the?
Yeah, there's plenty of parking there, yes.
So you got space and stuff, because those are the things we asked for, whether parking, whether fire, rescue, all the things that's needed in case of emergency.
I spoke with the fire department as well, and, uh, that was me, yeah. Was you, yeah.
So, uh, and as you heard earlier, I talked about this large gathering, uh, thing we wanna do at some point. But what we've been doing is doing this case by case, having people come in and talk to us, and then we make our decision.
Yep.
Uh, I personally don't seem to have any problem with this, as long as the property owners don't, because you're gonna be there with the equipment and stuff.
I've been to a lot of J Days and they run pretty good.
Yeah, I was gonna speak on that too, if you needed somebody, my, I have a child that races J Day, I go to a lot of the races. Um, it's, it's, it's a quick setup for the, the people that do the setup, well, not quick, but they set it up nicely, they, they rope it off to where the, the racers can and can't go.
Do they do that down across from Jiminy Peak?
Yes, one moment down there.
Bembaia.
Yes, and I mean, you know, it's.
Looks fun, looks kinda neat.
It is a lot of fun.
It's fun to watch.
It's fun to watch, it's fun to, like, the people have fun participating, the young children, I mean, you have little ones out there on motorcycles having a ball. It is a great time.
You having people come in tonight for?
Yes, I would like to, yeah.
And, um, forgive me if you already said, but how many people are you expecting?
Uh, probably somewhere in the neighborhood of four to five hundred total, but you're probably only a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty participants, racers.
How about alcohol?
Uh, no serving alcohol, you know, keep my, I, I always stay there. I know I look a little funny, but, you know, you monitor and make sure people don't get out of control.
Well, see, these guys racing are.
Yeah, they're, you know, it's, I've never had a problem with it, so.
Do you have food vendors there or anything?
Um, there isn't, but I think what we're gonna do.
Yeah, I wanted to check on that, I didn't know who I needed to contact to be able to do like hot dogs and burgers.
Health officer.
And I was at the local guy or?
State.
State, you're gonna, you're gonna have to do a state for this size.
State, hello?
You have a, basically, they have a vendor's license, what the state issues, and then you can basically set up, do your thing. Uh, but you, is the state, I need to check with.
You may be able to get away with it one day, you know, I'm not sure.
Numbers for the general permit that you get on.
We can sometimes at the league.
Which agency try to get a hold of?
It all depends.
Nothing to do with them. Go ahead.
I said some days, sometimes you can do it one day for men.
Yeah, that's.
And you don't get involved with, but you're supposed to have running water, place to hand wash and all.
You're gonna have porta potties, stuff like that.
Yes, yeah, yeah, all that, get the local gentleman a porta potties.
Because those are the things that, that basically on this permit we're trying to do is when you go out and you say all that, then it makes it much easier for us to decide, because we try to remember now every time what you need, you know, porta potties, this, this and this.
Porta potties, insurance, fire and rescue, and it's, you know, it's major things that you line up.
Well, personally, I have no problem with this, as I said, as long as the, the property owners don't mind.
Sure.
Uh, that down there, if they're all happy with it, I'm happy with it.[1752.61] owners don't mind that down there. If they're all happy with it, I'm happy with it.
Okay.
What are your thoughts, guys?
What about liability insurance and stuff like that?
I have, yeah, that's why I was late coming in, actually. I was on the phone.
That's why I asked the property owners too, because I assume you wouldn't want them on there unless you had.
Right, yeah, no, and then, and then I, I bring the, I bring a copy of the waivers. I, everybody who enters the property has to sign a waiver.
We have to sign off. We write, they write on our own. We enter at our own risk, everything.
You sign, they sign, you know, they sign the waivers. All the insurance is covered under that. That we're there, it's not on the landowner's insurance.
So, get a motion approved?
So, so, so the, so the, so the actual riding time is on Sunday?
Is on Sunday, yep.
Okay.
And the, and the sound or noise ordinances and everything else are fine? It's daytime?
It's indecibel. The, most of the motorcycles, or all the motorcycles are, I have a tech inspection. You have to go through tech inspection. You have to have your silencer, helmet, boots, stuff along that line.
It's daytime.
When they, when they were doing the motorcycles down below, O S M A has to be seventy dB lower of the exhaust, so.
They go by so fast you're not even going to hear them.
I'm sure you're hearing.
Yeah, and the same thing.
My son races, I don't know how many years.
Ours is seventy in town.
In town, okay.
So, seventy dB. Okay, to the property line.
To the property line, so. Yep, yeah, plenty of room, yep.
Gotcha. So if you're right on the property line, you make a lot of noise different, but if you, nowadays, if you've got a.
There's silencers.
Yeah, if you've got a cell phone that takes after, you do a decibel level on it, stand on a sideline, you'll get your decibel level.
Yep.
But seventy dB is what we holler, allow a lot to the property lines.
Okay.
And usually it's, uh, neighbor-driven complaints. And in your case out there, there isn't too many neighbors around where this is going to be.
No, it's, yeah, it's pretty.
I was going to say, you got a neighbor there, but.
Yeah.
The rest of it's all trees and woods.
I move that we approve it. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Have fun.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with it.
Anybody would like a copy of that so you know what you're looking at?
Sure, sure.
Sure, yeah.
Absolutely.
I got a son of all the world.
Inspector.
Oh, my grandson, Ethan Bradshaw.
Oh, that's fantastic, see?
So people can just go and watch, right?
Yep, you can go and watch.
You know Nathan, don't you?
I do know Nathan, yep.
That's my son.
Oh, that's your son.
What's, what's, I see there's entry fees. What's the fee for people to go work, watch?
Um, it's, it's a ten dollar fee, but I believe speaking with, um, Sean and his wife, they were, you know, people in town close to the area.